Good evening and welcome to this forum for the Stevens Point Alder candidates sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Stevens Point area, the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point Student Government Association, and the Portage County Business Council. My name is Sue Buck. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the Stevens Point area and I will serve as moderator for this event. The League of Women Voters is a political but nonpartisan organization. The League's primary purpose is to encourage voting by registering voters, providing voter information, advocating for voting rights, and tonight's event is part of providing voter information through candidates sharing their views of issues of concern to Stevens Point residents. The cosponsors of this forum, the UWSP Student Government Association and the Portage County Business Council, are also nonpartisan organizations with no endorsement of candidates or political parties. Their interest is helping local citizens to be more informed voters. Historically, part of the Menominee homelands, a three-mile strip along the Wisconsin River was ceded to the United States in 1836 treaty, within an 1836 treaty. Stevens Point was first established as an unincorporated village in 1847. In 1858, the area became known as the City of Stevens Point. The population of Stevens Point is estimated at 25,692 in 2021. It covers 18 and a half square miles. The 2022 budget for the City of Stevens Point was $18,696,390. There are four active TIF, Tax Incremental Finance, districts in the City of Stevens Point. Stevens Point has a mayor and city council form of government. There are 11 Aldermanic districts representing 33 wards. Alders are elected to serve a two-year term. Odd-numbered districts are elected in odd-numbered years unless there is a vacancy in an even-numbered district. The council meets the third Monday evening of every month. The Stevens Point Alders are compensated at an annual rate of $5,309, according to the 2023 city budget. That $9 is really important. There are eight candidates running for the contested seats of four of the Aldermanic districts. The candidates are Mark Christensen and Gracia Day for District One, Jason Burrant and David Plezance, District Six, Tim Johnson and Mary Niebone, District Seven, and Keith Kudrowski and Sam Lang, District Nine. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum. Joining us tonight are all the candidates except Gracia Day, who let me know today that she had a last-minute work commitment and could not make it. To provide the most time to hear from the candidates and to provide a fair and equal opportunity to answer questions important to you and this community, I will review the format, time, and terms of this forum. This has also been reviewed with the candidates. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to introduce themselves and make an opening statement. They will have one and a half minutes to respond to questions. They will also have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement, and if needed, I will be glad to repeat the question, if requested. Candidates will respond first to some questions submitted by the League, the UWSP Student Government Association, and the Portage County Business Council, and then questions from the audience. Questions from the audience must be addressed to all the candidates. If you want to submit a question, please motion to one of the ushers for index cards and pencils, and they are on the sides over here. Just let them know if you need a card and a pencil. The League reserves the right to review and screen questions for relevance and to avoid duplication. We have timers who are located in front of the candidate tables. A green folder will be held up when their time starts. A yellow folder indicates 30 seconds remain, and the red folder means that time has expired. Candidates may finish their sentence and then please stop so the next candidate may begin the response. Candidates are asked to keep their remarks germane to the questions and fair to the participants. Audience members are requested to respect the candidates' time and responses. They are also asked to turn off their sound-making devices. The moderator reserves the right to interrupt to ensure that these ground rules are observed. The order of response to each question will be rotated. We will alternate which candidates answer the questions first. The order of the opening and closing statements will be chosen by random drawing of the candidates' names. As I've already stated, participating in tonight's forum are Jason Burrant, Mark Christensen, Timothy Johnson, Mary Niebo, Sam Lang, and David Plezance. And now we begin with a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement from each candidate. And we have a high-tech way of making that determination. And our first opening statement is from Jason Burrant.
Great. So, yeah, I'm Jason Burrant, running for District Six Alderman. I grew up here, moved back here about seven years ago. This journey for me started about four years ago when I moved over to Heffron Street, and all I wanted to do was get traffic to slow down. So, I had a hard time kind of finding who to talk to and kind of get that rolling. When I finally got to the right person, there wasn't a lot of action with that. So, I, as much as I complained about it with my wife and my neighbors, I thought that the best way to take action and to make a difference is to, you know, become a voice in this community. So, a lot of my answers, although I've never held public office, I have been members of boards, and most of my answers will be, you know, biased towards my experience living here, growing up here, as well as, you know, the last seven years of being a resident here and listening to my neighbors, getting to know a lot of my neighbors, hearing opinions about the way that the city's moving forward or not moving forward, et cetera. So, I look forward to answering any questions you might have and going from there. So, you know, I have a young family. I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old. I just, I'm not convinced that this council, you know, that genre is well-represented in that council, so I'd like to represent that genre. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next opening statement will be by David Plezance.
I want to thank you all for allowing me to come here tonight. De Plezance, I am the current Alderman for the Sixth District. I was elected into this position in November to fill the term for a gentleman who had some health issues. And right off the bat, when I started this position, luckily, I was voted in that night, the first night, I was prepared and came there with numerous questions on what was going on on that day in the council and the sessions. Over this time, I've really tried to prepare myself for meetings. I've met with Public Works, I've met with planning and zoning, I go to the committee meetings that I'm not involved in. I'm involved in finance, and Public Works are the two big ones. This past Monday night, we had a finance meeting, and there was an item on there where I thought we were overpaying for the purchase of land by $75,000 that was just purchased a year ago by the person who then was going to sell it to the city. I was the lead person in probably getting that kickback. I listen to my customers. I've been in the community since 1980, a university graduate. My wife is a university graduate here. She taught for 31 years at Almond Bancroft School, now works at the Boston School Forest. I've got two daughters that are, have moved out of the area. Unfortunately, the closest one is two time zones away. I've really learned a lot so far, and I hope that I can continue learning in this job for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Sam Lang.
Hello, I'm Sam Lang. I've moved here in 2017, hoping that my time on the council, if I'm, you know, y'all so good as to elect me, will be spent working with our mayor, whoever that would be, and our city council members to advance a few things around our city, like services, emergency services, like bus services, those sort of things is what I want to see us do. I want to see us grow. A little bit about me is I've come here with disability. Stevens Point has been a community that came together with the community resources and really lifted me up, and I want to be able to give back to this community. It's done a lot for me, and I've made a lot of connections in that chapter of my life in this community, seeing what the needs are, seeing where we fall short, and where we need to do better. I'd like to be able to bring forward those perspectives and advocate for the people in our community that are underserved, underrepresented, and vulnerable. That's what leads me to this open seat, is a community of people who understood that maybe I didn't understand that about myself yet, is I can do this. I've got experience on boards. I did student government, FFA. I've got experience to do this job, but I'm also new to government, and so I'll be growing in this position if I'm so fortunate as to be elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Kudrowski.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. My name's Keith Kudrowski, born and raised in Stevens Point. Graduated Pachala High School in 1977, worked during its healthcare for 11 years before I moved out east, where I did route delivery sales job, rearranged route, created room, created sales, had to move inside, become production manager, took us from 70% efficiency to 99% efficiency. They moved, I didn't want to move. Moved on numerous jobs, ended up being IT support, hardware, software, created a few databases. But in between all that, five years, I worked the United States Department of State procurement, logistics, and it was a large contract, 300 and some million dollars back in 2000. Lots of wasted money. My colleague and myself made several suggestions through research to procure less expensive equipment and services, often to be just shunned by the government employee who seemed to not care about the taxpayer, which is why I'm running, because I feel sometimes the city council, I've been to a few meetings, I've seen 40-some people speak, I've seen people yawning, and I, one of them even has written a piece on how to ignore your constituents. My goal is to listen to my people in District Nine, fiscally responsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Niebone.
Thank you. First off, I've just coming off COVID virus, so I'm wearing a mask out of consideration for my colleagues here. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the critical role the League has played in nonpartisan civil political discourse for over 100 years. I want to thank also the UWSP Student Government Alliance and the Portage County Business Council for cosponsoring this event. I'd like to also thank all of you for being here tonight, and for those who will take the time to listen or watch on social media. I believe public service is a noble calling. I'm a proud Vietnam-era veteran of the United States Air Force, and this belief in public service led me to run for Alder Person when I retired in 2015. I hold a master's degree in urban and regional planning from UW-Madison and a bachelor's degree in resource management from our own UWSP College of Natural Resources. I'm a former member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I worked as a neighborhood planner for the City of Dallas. Stevens Point stole my heart while I was a student here, and I moved back at my first opportunity. I've lived in District Seven for 17 years, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to use my education and experience to make our community the absolute best place to live and raise a family.
Thank you. Tim Johnson.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to the forum. I'd like to thank you for taking time off your couch to be here, because you could have easily been watching TV or doing something a little bit more fun. Why I decided to run, I talked a lot about city stuff with my wife, and she told me, well, you need to get more active, and you need to do something. Well, I went down and I drafted up candidacy papers, and she said to me first thing, I didn't mean that. And I had to explain to her, you have to be specific with guys, you know? You have to tell us exactly what you want, otherwise, we're going to kind of go off. But, no, she agreed with it in the end. She said, yeah, you know, if you have ideas, go for it. I moved back to Stevens Point area back in 2011 after living in Madison, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the traffic here versus Madison. I love the small-time, you know, the good neighborly feeling this community has. I love trivia, so I love being a part of this community, and I just wanted to run and bring ideas fresh to the city if at all possible.
Okay, thank you. And Mark Christensen.
Thank you. First of all, yes, I'd also like to join with all the others in thanking you for taking the time to being here. You all have other things that you could be doing and have chosen to spend your time listening and making informed choices, so I appreciate you taking the time and effort to be able to do that. I'm not from here originally. I chose Stevens Point. Both my sons are graduates of UWSP, became familiar with central Wisconsin, and decided when I get a chance, this is where I want to be, and this is where I'll want to spend the rest of my time on this planet. I was a school administrator, district superintendent out in Rochelle for nine years, retired three and a half years ago. We always, our intent was to make this our forever home after we were done with that. We looked at over 80 houses and chose one, we're fortunate, and I am fortunate enough to have one of my sons still staying in the Stevens Point area. He lives in the town of Hall. I get to spend a lot of time with my two grandchildren. I have had a chance to be on a number of boards and commissions throughout my career. I guess the reason I made the decision to run was because I felt I had three things that really lent itself well to the position. I thought I had the experience of 33 years in administration to understand budgets and work with people. I thought I, so I had experience, I had some expertise as far as having a master's degree in administration, but I also had the luxury of time. One of the things I've done since I've been on city council and representing District One is I spend-
Thank you.
-an incredible amount of time.
Thank you.
Time.
Thank you. Time. Time. That is true. Time. All right. I drew the name for the first, to start the first question, and it's going to be David Plezance, and here's, and then we'll go in order after that. And here's the first question, and like I said, if you need me to repeat it, I'd be glad to do that. The first question comes from the League and the Student Government and Portage County Business Council. "In much of the city, it's not allowed for more than two people who aren't related to live in the same house. Should that be changed?"
I used to be a landlord and owned various student rental properties and had to deal with this over the years, and at that point, you know, let's face it, as a landlord, you want to be able to get as many people as you can in the property. Since I've stepped on board with the council and understanding some of the housing issues and stuff we've got in this area, there are certain situations where things, I'm kind of going, I'm one to push it at three and not two. I think that there's places where, outside of student housing, where maybe three teachers that are unrelated are cutting expenses. There's, it's a tough thing to do, but we are missing on housing. And right now, I used to also be a mortgage lender, and I know that rentals and mortgages are up there, and it is tough for one or two people to afford a place in this town to live, a nice place. I think that that is part of the answer. I'm kind of glad, too, that right now, we're getting into allowing a second residence on the same property, and there's potential at the council meeting next Monday of passing the first one in that situation where it would be elderly couple being able to live where their children are. So, there are a lot of unique things out there, and this is just one of the little grains of sand that needs to be adjusted in order to get some fair housing and housing for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Burrant.
I am not a landlord. I've never been a landlord. I can understand that this probably pertains to a university town like ours. I firmly believe that if you have a three-bedroom apartment for rent, why can't three people live there? But I also think that holding the landlords accountable, I do not live next to any college kids. I've been a college kid. I lived in a house full of people. I can imagine what our neighbors thought of us at the time, so I can empathize with those folks that live next door to housing. I'm not on any committees. I don't have, I don't know if ideas have been brought, but I think that there's probably a way to keep landlords, you know, accountable for their, you know, for their tenants, whether it be noise ordinances, whether it be run-ins with the law, et cetera. So, I think that I'm all for the safety of putting as many people into a house as legally possible, I guess, but, you know, in certain districts, I can speak from experience that in between houses, I, me and my family couldn't find a place to rent in this town, so that was an issue. This town needs more renting space. So, yeah, I think that there's a lot to consider based on districts that this pertains to. It doesn't really pertain to, you know, as we leave the downtown and areas, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Christensen.
I've had the opportunity to attend the majority of the Housing Task Force meetings. A lot of very good discussion took place at those meetings. It was an ad hoc committee that was set up to take a look at the housing situation in They did come out with a recommendation to actually increase it to four. I would have a tough time supporting going to four. There's two alternatives being looked at right now. One is to increase it to three across the board. The other is to increase it to three if it's owner-occupied and remain at two otherwise. I think there's some merit to both of those, and I can see pros and cons of each way. I do know I've had conversations with some young professionals that have been working and saving for ever. It's difficult for young people to put aside enough savings to be able to pay for the down payment and start building their own equity, so I understand. I'm very much in favor of having some type of an incentive for owner-occupation. I'm still somewhat undecided on whether to increase it to three, but I can, I guess I still want to have some more conversations. I think that, make an informed decision.
Okay, thank you. Tim Johnson.
I would actually say that if there is the proper accommodations for it, up to three, I don't see a problem with that. I can kind of relate to it. I'm freshly married, so as of January, she said I, you know, she agreed, and I'm like, she tolerates me, that's great. But I had to learn how to live with someone again. I was a bachelor for 10 years after my divorce, so I had to learn how to, you know, live with someone again, and there is no manual on how to become a stepdad, so there's a whole steep learning curve for me, so living with people that I'd never lived with before and making sure I understand living conditions was kind of good firsthand experience. Like I say, if there's three bedrooms, why not? You know, as long as you're not trying to cram 15 people into three bedrooms, you know, stuff like that. I really do believe that if there is an accommodation for it and there's no health or safety issue, three is plenty.
Thank you. Keith Kudrowski.
Thank you very much. I would say definitely not the four. I know Mark brought, I did listen in on that meeting last Monday, the finance meeting, I believe it was, where they talked about it. Understand rent is getting, inflation's just out of control. The city really needs to become more conscious of their spending, which I think sometimes we're not, because we're often over budget, but I would say max three. There's zoning for a reason, single-family, a single-family. I'd get two. I'm not sure I agree with you. I'd have to, I say, I agree, I'd have to do a little more research. It would depend on the building, too. I mean, I'm sorry, some houses just aren't made for more, the yard's not made for parking. We talked about parking being an issue during the mayor event, that, I mean, if there's not room to park, there's not room for three people. You know, street parking shouldn't be an option for overnight to occupy your place, so I said again, have to do a little more research, but I, for now, three max, and I would prefer the owner live there for that third person. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Niebone.
Thank you. Yeah, as a person on a fixed income and a homeowner, I'm concerned about the fact that I could be taxed out of my house. I live in a three-bedroom house. The way the current rules are, I could rent one bedroom to an, to a unrelated person. I'd like to be able to rent both and, you know, have a little Golden Girls situation going on, where I can, I can have some help paying my taxes, I can stay in my home longer, and I've got people of an age, my age, where we all kind of can help each other get through, take care of each other, watch out for each other. I think it's very important to tie increased occupancy to owner-occupancy. We're talking about getting people into homes. If you're a young person or a young couple trying to buy a house these days, it's practically impossible. If you can bring in a renter or two, a couple of your friends, family member, to help with the mortgage, we can keep some of these college kids in town by providing an avenue for them to afford, to afford a house, to build that equity, to stay invested in the community, and to participate in all the options that the city has to offer. I think four people, four unrelated people are too many. I think three works with owner-occupied, with the owner-occupied condition.
Okay, thank you. And the last on this question, Sam Lang.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure, it's been a while, I know. With the recent, with the, no. "In much of the city, it's not allowed for more than two people who aren't related to live in the same house. Should that be changed?"
How we do it is another question, but yes, we should change that. The owner-occupancy is one of these things that I would also support, where we can increase it, as long as we have a owner occupying that property at that time. I'd support that. I have a lot of questions around how we're changing it. I am not understanding where we're getting the idea that we get to tell people where their family begins and where their family ends. And so, I think the language is kind of sloppy. I think we need to figure out a different verbiage, language around defining what residency and having a family unit or being in a legal relationship, because that's what's been proposed, really means. So, I'm for increasing it. I just don't understand at this point, and I think there's some more work to be done on how we're going to do it.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start the next question with Jason Burrant. "With the recent inflation, the salaries of city staff have in effect been cut, and department budgets are falling short. What should be done to close the gap?"
They were cut? I thought everyone got a three-and-a-half percent raise.
But with inflation, it's been 6%. So, in effect, their salaries have been cut.
I see that. Oh, okay. Well, what should be done, I guess, is to get a, to get a handle on spending. I think it's the mayor's decision to, you know, dedicate who's on the finance board and who passes and approves those budgets. I think they should probably be looked at a little bit harder. I think that, you know, the tax rate could put young families out of their houses, especially if they're budgeted for a certain amount for the year. Any kind of tax rate, 26% or something like, could really cause young people to move away, and that would be probably a big issue if we lose members of our community. I guess, yes, just getting a handle on the finance. I don't know if inflation's going to go down at all, you know, at this point. There's no sign of that, so working within your budget limits and making better decisions, maybe getting people on the board with some experience in finance, different suggestions, a different range of people and ages, et cetera, that could probably all help move it in the right direction, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Christensen.
As a school administrator, every decision that was made, we always did a cost-benefits analysis, took a look at what the cost of that decision would be in terms of dollars, in terms of time, and benefits is, you know, could be varied depending on what type of project it was. I think the city- I think the city goes through a similar process. I know this past budget, the city, the mayor did ask department heads to cut a significant number of dollars out of their budget in order to be able to reach the three and a half percent pay increase that they received. Right now, the way that state statutes exist, the city can only increase the number of dollars it's spending by the same percentage of new development in a, in the community. And we've been fortunate in that we've been able to, to average a good amount, so we've been able to maintain the level of services that we are currently providing. If we're, so economic development is also an important component in order to keep, if we develop our tax base, we can keep our tax rates low.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I understand with inflation going up, it's extremely hard to make ends meet. I love spreadsheets, not going to lie. I absolutely love spreadsheets. My wife is annoyed with me when I get out the spreadsheets, but I understand you have to live within your means, and I would agree that the three and a half percent is not enough. We need a livable wage for everyone, but we have to also be fiscally responsible within our community. And I agree with the economic development, as we can develop our city to provide those opportunities, we can then have, it all comes full circle. As you increase the, the economics of the city, the money just will increase. So I think that as you, you put time and attention into your city, care for your city, the, the funding will be there in the form of taxes to help keep up with inflation. Hopefully, we get a handle on inflation sooner or later, hopefully sooner. But understandably, inflation is a huge problem. I look at my own budget, go, holy cow, that's expensive, but sometimes you have to spend to get to your objective.
Okay, thank you. Keith Kudrowski.
Sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat that real quick.
Sure, I'm glad to. With the recent inflation, the salaries of city staff have in effect been cut, and department budgets are falling short. What should be done to close the gap?
Yep, sadly, inflation's been a major issue for all of us, whether we're a city worker or whether we're just a worker. Elections have consequences. What we do to help the, the city employees, we can only do what we can do. Someone's got to pay for these people. The people are paying for these people are, have also been affected by the same inflation that's happened for the last 18 months or so. It's kind of, sadly, inflation's a little out of the city's control. What we have to do is, that's where we need to be fiscally responsible with our infrastructure work and other projects. Understand, we want to do everything for it. I like decoration, I like pretty, but we need to do functional first, pretty later. So I guess, I don't know. I have to do a little more research, but inflation's painful for everyone. We're all feeling it. It's, I say, we'll do some research for all we can do for the employees.
Thank you. Mary Niebohm.
Thank you. What can we do to address this issue? And I understand the fear of being taxed out of a house. I understand how hard it is for people like me on a fixed income to figure out how we're going to pay the bills every month. I think it is incumbent upon the alders and the mayor to continue to forcefully lobby the state legislature to return some of our shared revenue and some of our sales tax revenue. We can't create money out of nothing. We're limited, they have limited our ability to raise our tax levies, and, and they have cut the funding that we give to them, they've cut their share back. We have talked about a wheel tax, the county wheel tax, we all pay in the city, but we do, the city does not get one penny of that wheel tax money. That all goes to the county. I don't like that idea, but I'd rather pay a flat fee than increase on my property taxes. We've talked about a transportation utility. Again, it would be a flat fee to businesses, residents, schools, churches, properties that are typically exempt from property tax income would be charged a rate based on trips generated. It would be a lot less expensive for businesses to go that route than a tax increase, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sam Lang.
I'm much of the same mind as Mary here. What I'd like to add to that is, not only does the state have money that's available to re-probrack into our community, the federal government does too. And we need to work as a community to recapture as much federal dollars through the grant programs as we possibly can. That's how we can make up some of these budget gaps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And David Pleasance.
I have to agree with the last two people who spoke regarding the state, but since I came aboard, I was in financing and banking, and just trying to figure out how the city works and where the city gets money. I used to do mortgage lending, and it was just always Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac. They've got TIF districts, they've got a budget that is for day-to-day operations, then there's another budget for the buildings and stuff. Keeping all those things and trying to figure it out is, it takes quite a bit of time. I don't have a great answer for how to cut things back, except I'm kind of a watchdog. I cut one thing this week, and hopefully next month, when it comes back, it's going to be purchased at a lower price and save the city a little bit of money. Three and a half percent, you know, it's not great, but I bet you there's people in this room here that didn't get three and a half percent increase. And so it's, at least the city did something and held its budget. The city is working as hard as they can with the comptroller and everything to keep things in line. We're looking at the 2024 budget right now and trying to get things figured, and there's a shortage at this moment, under $200,000, but it's still a shortage at this time, and that's not facting in any new wage increases or anything. So I really don't have a good answer to what you've got, except for the fact that I need to learn more by being in this job.
All right, thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mark Christiansen, and here is the question. In this time of heated political rhetoric and threats of violence, how will you build bridges with constituents who disagree with you?
I think that's a good question, and, and I've made a point, I think it's important, one of the problems we have right now is people have the ability to surround themselves by people that think exactly like they do 24/7, and, and that's dangerous. I've made a point of reaching out and sitting down with people whose viewpoints I don't necessarily agree with, but we've been able to sit down, have good discussions, and a lot of times, their perspective helps inform my ultimate decision. It might not be what they would have, but it's something I always take into account. My, the, my opponent from the last election, and I still meet probably every two, three weeks, and go through and talk about topics, and I think that's important to, to have that variety of perspectives. I think one of the real unfortunate things is we've kind of lost our ability to disagree without being disagreeable, and I think that's not just true locally, but it kind of society-wide, and that's really unfortunate and something I think we really need to, to take, pay attention to and try to take steps to alleviate.
Okay, thank you. Tim Johnson.
I would agree with everything Mark has said. We do tend to bring like-minded people around ourselves, and that has a tendency to insulate us to not seeing other ideas. A lot of times, you'll talk to somebody, go, wow, I never thought about that, because maybe someone in your group didn't think about that. Almost all the time, you're never going to have the answers. I will stand before you and say, I'm not going to be perfect, but I will definitely seek out other opinions, because a lot of times, that could be better than what I had in my head. I can even go back to my family as a good example. I'll make a decision, and my wife will say, well, what about this? Like, you know, it's a good point, and to what Mark said, I've witnessed, sometimes it does devolve into name-calling, and that bothers me, because I think we can respectfully disagree with each other. You don't have to agree with everything that a person says, but you need to respect them as a person. And when we get to that level of you're such and such, and you're this, and name-calling, it, it turns me off, because I like intellectual debate. Even if I disagree with you, I like intellectual debate. I might actually learn something.
Okay, thank you. Keith Kudrowski.
Boy, sorry, I got to ask you again to repeat the question.
Sure. In this time of heated political rhetoric and threats of violence, how will you build bridges with constituents who disagree with you?
Communication, listening, listening, listening. God gave us two ears, one mouth, I was told that a long time ago for a reason. Should be listening twice as much as I'm talking. I don't like when I'm not listened to, and I experienced that at some of the meetings where I feel were heard but not listened, because there's a difference between hearing and listening. At work, we have a diversified group of people. We definitely come from different, different political spectrums, and we have some very solid conversations, and I win and I lose, and we tend to agree to disagree, or we come to a middle point even within our job. But, you know, it's the name-calling, I'm not going to say I'm totally innocent of not calling people out. Probably been called out myself, too, so, yeah, that doesn't help, but I think listening, listening and talking, one-on-one conversations, like Mark said in the bar, you know, it's where they created most of these great things that happen in this country that happened in the tavern. So, you know, somewhere where you can be calm and relaxed and have a conversation.
Okay, thank you. Mary Niebohm.
Sure, thank you. We have absolutely nothing to fear from civil discourse. I'm a Libra. I want to listen to everybody's opinion, because there's always another hand to the argument, or the discussion, or, or the opinion. So I think if we come, if we, if we remember, too, that it's not us versus them, it's not win-lose, it's sit-down, we're neighbors, we're all in this together. At the local level, there's no excuse for some of the negativity that has been expressed at council meetings and, and committee meetings, but we listen, and that's just what you do. I have heard people at meetings and changed an opinion that I had, changed a vote based on what I heard people say. So I'm, I'm open to hearing all the sides of an opinion of an issue. I want to find the scientific answers, I want to find the financial answers, want to find the social answers that serve the issue the best. I think as long as we remember that we're neighbors, we live, we live and work together, we love our community, we want to see all of us thrive, because it makes it better for all of us, let's just talk, we can do it.
Okay, thank you. Sam Lang.
I'm just going to say, wow, I, I love what I'm hearing up here. Absolutely, I'm going to agree with Keith here, Mary here, like, Mark, like, we do, we just have to talk to each other, that's where it begins. We need to have good faith dialogue with each other. We need to be able to open up, feel like it's safe that we can talk to each other. It's not, you know, a boogeyman to go talk to your neighbor over the fence, you know, what happened to like Al and Wilson and all that kind of thing, Tool Time, if you guys remember that show. Like, we do, we just have to talk to each other. Yeah, differences of opinions are going to happen, but being a neighbor, you just talk with people. If you want to have a community where you can walk down the street and say hi to each other and wave as you're at the grocery store, you have to talk with people. You don't have to agree with them on everything, but like, without good faith dialogue, we're lost as people. And I believe in the power to heal through dialogue. Like, that's where you will resolve problems, that's where it occurs in discussion. And if we can't get to there, we, we're nowhere. So I'd just say, don't be afraid to talk to your neighbors.
Thank you. David Pleasance.
I look at, it starts with myself, and respect and honesty. I'm an honest person, and I try to portray that to everyone. I've shown it by example in my life, and my wife and kids have too. I've gotten back, I've, since I've taken, it's amazing, 9:30 on a Friday night, getting a call from someone in the district with a complaint and listening through. This past Monday, I had a meeting with the, one of the department heads, and the next day, I had promised that before both of these people went to their work shift in the afternoon, that they would get a call to me regarding their complaint that I brought up with it. One of them was answered nicely, really surprisingly, and the other one wasn't, but going about and stating it honestly and what the person said and stuff, we left on very good terms. It was like, okay, it can't be done, but I understand why it can't. Group listening, too, it's like, we're, I'm one person and an alderman, but I cannot make any vote on anything myself. It is a group of 11 that can make the decision of one item. But getting in touch with your constituents on things. This past Sunday, I was asked to attend a meeting at a house of about 15 people in a neighborhood where the city was planning on putting a garage up right next to it, and that would have decreased the values of their properties. We met, a lot of those people then came to the finance meeting on Monday night, very civil. They even applauded the answers in the end. It wasn't what they wanted, but they understood what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Due to our time, we only have time for one last que, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Berent. There you go.
Thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, we live in a divided world today, right? I mean, how many of you are Aaron Rodgers fans right now? I don't see any Jets jerseys out there yet, but I think if I was elected alderman, you know, my job would be to collect that information, to be, to listen. As Dave said, I, I'm one person, but I can be one to many in terms of bringing those issues, those opinions, et cetera, to the board of people that, that make the decisions. You know, I'll have an open-door policy, you know. I can debate about politics or religion, sports, my golf handicap, all, in private, all that I want, but as an elected official, I don't think I have, you know, that's not my right to, to give my opinion to my constituents if they, they were to become that. You know, my role is, is to be their soundboard, to listen to them. You know, whether it's having a streetlight changed or whatnot, you know, that's, that's something that, as small as that, up to, you know, making big decisions. So, you know, I guess an, to kind of bring it all full speed, that I, I don't really see a divide in terms of when you're representing your people, you know, the people of your district. It's, you're, you're one with everybody. I, I don't have that luxury of choosing a side, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I started to say, based on time, we have one last question for you all, and we will start with Tim Johnson. And the question is, the ways our streets are used have been at the center of a lot of recent controversies. How do we strike the right balance between driving, bicycle commuting, pedestrians, and those with disabilities?
That's actually a very good question. Not everyone can, A, afford a car, drive a car, so you have to accommodate for those that do not have that blessing in their life. The bus system is in place right now to help that. It wouldn't hurt to take a look at it, make sure it's being efficient, it's not taken away, make sure it's efficient, make sure we're not wasting. You want to have these services available to everyone, you want to have the ability to respect bicycles on the road, you know, anything that, we don't want to take anything away from people, but we want to be responsible with what we give to the people. I look towards, safety is one of my huge concerns in this. I was on a police ride-along, and I noticed the officer had to go back to the station to change the battery in his, his camera on his thing, on his, what do you call it, the shoulder radio. I was concerned about that, because if we can't provide that kind of safety for our emer-. emergency services, it does affect us all. So, you know, the police play a huge role in making sure our traffic moves safely, and I want to make sure they have the resources to do their job, so that we can safely commute, do whatever we want, go to festivals, and participate in city events, especially trivia.
Okay, Keith Kudrowski.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, oh boy, how do we attack this one? The roads need to be available for commercial traffic as well as bicycles, but when I grew up, I, I'm 60-some years old, I rode a bike my whole life without one bike lane, and I'm still here. I didn't go onto major streets. I mean, common sense says you just don't. I mean, we don't need a bike lane on every street. We have plenty of side streets that actually are a lot better scenery than Division and Church Street are, the nicer houses are on Wyatt and Plover and Pine. So, but we also need to remember that people need to move trucks around this town. I have a friend who drove tractor-trailer, just cringe about driving down Division Street with the cars and a bicycle. Why would you be on that road with a bicycle? They have sidewalks. I live on Water Street, I told my landlord we need a stop sign at the sidewalk, because they're always whistling down the sidewalk, not in the bicycle lane that they built for these people. So, I think our town does a good job, and I think we could set up bike right, bike routes that are on these side streets that are virtually the same as Division and Church, they're not really needed on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Niebohn.
Thank you. So, I guess what we're really talking about is equity in transportation. We want to make our streets accessible to all users, bicyclists, parents pushing children in strollers, people walking dogs, skateboarders, inline skaters, truck drivers, cars, emergency vehicles. We have to figure out a way to make our transportation system equitable, equitable to all users. Not every street should be a bike lane, and not every major street is planned to have a bike lane. But bike lanes are important, because they bring people's awareness to the fact that not only cars are on the road. If you see a charrow painted on the, on the street, be aware that a bicyclist has the same rights per the state transportation laws as a vehicle to use that roadway, and they are subject to the same traffic laws. I hear a lot, ah, if they just get those bicyclists to quit running red lights, if they just quit those cars speeding down Main Street, five miles over the speed limit, things would be a lot safer, wouldn't they? You can't blame one mode of transportation or another on, on making things uncomfortable. We're not a very pedestrian, oh, I'm sorry, my time is up.
Thank you.
Leave that for another time.
Yes. I would be glad to. The way, the ways our streets are used have been at the center of a lot of recent controversies. How do we strike the right balance between driving, bicycle commuting, pedestrians, and those with disabilities?
Finding the balance, that is a tricky thing. When you got shared uses on roads, you're gonna always have these sort of special interests that go along with it, and finding the balance is always gonna be, how to say, a little bit of a fight within any community. I believe how you get through it, though, is by maintaining your priorities, keeping your values at the center, and I think safety has to be first and foremost there. If we want to move forward with meeting these needs, the shared, the shared use, you have to keep safety at the forefront. If those things get mucked up by, like, say, economic interests, or, let's say, traffic efficiency, I think you're setting yourselves up for a tragedy, somebody is gonna get hit, that sort of a thing. I grew up riding a bike, too, and I can say I don't have all my friends. We did not have bike lanes. And that is one of the things that I cannot forget, and will not forget, about how we plan our cities, how we plan our communities, is people that I don't have in my life. So, priorities, first and foremost, keep them at the center. Safety has to be the first priority.
Okay, thank you. David Plezance.
I kind of remember back when I was a kid, too, riding bikes through the city and stuff, and I remember biking before there were even handicap corner curbs, where you had to pull your bike wheel up, and or, otherwise you were gonna slam right into it. Times have changed for the better regarding a lot of this. There's another issue that kind of comes up with this, too, and that's summer versus winter. There's a lot of problems that we have, like right on Division Street, where the plows come through, and then the sidewalks are completely covered, because they're so close. Issues like this have to be really examined into more detail. This is a tough subject, but it's one that, let's face it, it makes the community feel good. You see, you go around and you see people walking, you see people riding bikes, you see people walking dogs and stuff, that's what you want to see in your community. So, this is a priority that we need to get a handle on. Unfortunately, money is needed to do this, and we've talked about budget issues and stuff before, it's, it's a little tighter on that right now. But I, in my neighborhood, we have no sidewalks, everybody's out on the road, and I have complained to the snow plowing people that for a month and a half, all we had was ice on the road, and you people in the city charge a fine for people who don't shovel their sidewalk, how come we can't charge a fine for the city for not plowing the ice off the roads? And that got nowhere. I'll leave that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jason Berent.
I think the city, growing up here, there were no bike lanes, I think the city has done an absolute marvelous job of incorporating those areas. The Green Circle Trail didn't, didn't exist when I was a kid here. But I, I think in terms of planning for the future, it's really a case-by-case basis, and I think it's up to the alderman to determine what needs to be done, and, or that alderperson, I should say, what, you know, what needs to be done in that, in their district. If there's a need for a bike lane, that, that, that's what you bring to the common council, that's, that's your role, I think, is, is, is almost keeping an eye on your district and bringing and improving what needs to be done for those. That's just common sense, I think. I don't know if I necessarily agree with some of the other, you know, improvements that, that have been done, you know. Along Patch Street, there's a giant walking path, that maybe we could have incorporated a bike path along there, too, instead of putting it in the street, et cetera. You know, there's certain areas, I think, where they kind of missed the, you know, missed the ball, but I, I think that, once again, being an open door in your district, and taking those requests, and, and being, being the voice of that district. Not every district's the same, not everyone has, there's many more bike riders daily in this area, and there's probably more weekend bike riders, you know, out in my district, so, you know, what needs to be done is determined.
Thank you. And Mark Christiansen.
I actually had the opportunity to attend a day-long seminar over in Appleton with another one of our city staff, and they had a presentation by a gentleman that, that started the organization eight to 80. And when you take a look, their concept is they, you should be designing your community to serve the needs of everyone from the ages of eight to 80. And I know there's some places, my 84-year-old mother-in-law lives with us, I wouldn't want her to cross the street by herself. I see my friend Cormac up in the crowd, he's eight, my granddaughter, my oldest granddaughter's eight, there's streets that they shouldn't be going across on their own. I see my friend Trevor up there, and he had, refers to the, the streets around the main street, downtown area, as the concrete moat. And it kind of is, and it's such a separation from really one of our main areas of commerce, from all the residents in the area, and one of the most densely populated we have. It's pretty clear, it's hard, it's gonna be impossible to give everybody what they want. I think what we need to strive to do is to give people what they need, and safety is a primary concern, and we want to make sure that it's safe for not just the able-bodied people from 25 to 55, but for, for all of our residents.
Thank you. We will now move into the closing statements. The clothing, closing statement is an opportunity for the candidates to comment on topics not covered by the questions. The order of closing statements will be chosen again by random drawing, and each candidate will have a minute and a half to present a closing statement. And our first closing statement will be Tim Johnson.
I want to thank you all for coming, and kind of braving, well, moderate weather today, but still, you could be in your nice cozy home instead of here. Couple of things that have been really important, and why I really thought about running was term limits. I don't want to be a career politician. I can't stand career politicians, I'll be honest. I believe in making the term for mayor, two terms, that's eight years total, so two four-year terms, and four two-year, two-year terms for alderpersons. Safety was a huge concern for me when I decided to run. J.B. Moody had contacted me about the lack of firefighters in his department there, and how we are badly understaffed, according to the national standard. That really did concern me. They were saying you have to have thus-and-such number for houses, thus-and-such number for strip malls. I'd like to see that we train and retain, a lot of our firefighters have been trained, and go off to Appleton, La Crosse, Milwaukee, and then we have to spend our tax dollars to train another person. So, I want to make it beneficial for them to stay when they come here, and we train them. Like I mentioned, the police issue earlier, I want to make sure our emergency services have the tools they need to make your lives safer. Those are just huge concerns for me. And my, your door may always be closed, or if I come knocking, but I want you to know my door is gonna be open, I'll have a phone number for you. Give me a call, express your concerns.
Thank you. Jason Berent.
Thank you for having me. We, we touched on housing and, you know, the, the bicycle safety. We talked a little bit about, you know, the 3.5 increase in keeping and pertaining. I think that, I'm kind, I'm more or less ran on the nostalgia of kind of Stevens Point, and kind of improving on that. We haven't talked at all about, like, you know, the improvement and development of parks and recreation, and multi-sport facilities, and the arts, and stuff that I think our community is kind of falling behind on. We didn't talk about small businesses, getting them here. I have a small business in Stevens Point. It took me three years to find an office space, there's nowhere for me to get office space. I, I think that could be a revenue builder by, you know, creating office space for small businesses and getting them here. I think we talk about using, I think the mayors were talking about using local tradesmen. I tried to get an electrician, it took me three and a half weeks, so we need to bring more tradesmen's here. I think we need to fill our convention centers, I think we need to kind of start from the root and build up. I mean, all this talk that we had today was fantastic, but we're kind of, I think we're kind of forgetting about why we all moved here in the first place, other than coming to university here, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Keith Kudrowski.
Thank you to the three groups who put this event on, and thank you, everybody who's taken your time this evening to come here and listen to us ramble on. But, I was blessed, Polly quit, she was a very good representative, she answered when I called or sent her a message, she got back in touch with me. So, when I heard she was leaving, we had a gentleman who ran last time, Brian Bilo, and he wasn't gonna do it, and I just always feel people should have a choice, should never, too many of these districts are unopposed, and that should never happen, the people should always get a choice. So, my objectives were to listen to my constituents like Polly did, I mean, transparency, the government's got to be more open. I think they have improved, but a couple of years ago, and we took 45 people to go and talk about Business 51, it was not very open. So, they have become more open. Fiscal responsibility, we talk inflation's out of control, I have to, I have to watch my budget, my landlord's raised the rent twice because taxes are increasing, so support local law enforcement and safety. The safety in this community is very important. Crime is rising in Stevens Point, we may not hear a lot about it, but it is. So, my job is to listen to my constituents, work with the other council members, and make for more improved Stevens Point. Thank you all.
Thank you. Sam Lang.
I'd like to thank everybody as well for coming out tonight. Thank you to the three organizations that put this on. One of the things that I feel we did not get to discuss a whole lot here is alderpersons was the Justice Center and relocation of it. This is something that will affect District Nine directly, which I'm running for. I've talked to quite a few people knocking doors as I go canvassing, and I've yet to find somebody who supports moving the Justice Center out of downtown area. And a lot of it has to do with the presence of sex offenders in our district. If we want safe communities, and we want to plan for safe communities in the future, we do need to have our Justice Center remain where it is. On that same note, we still need to fully staff our fire department, we need to increase the capabilities of our police force. We have a problem retaining these professionals as well in our community, and that has a lot to do with how we are compensating them. If we want to keep people that are trained professionals in our emergency services, in our law enforcement, we gotta really have a hard conversation about how we are compensating these people, so that we can have that staffing shortage gap closed.
Thank you. Mark Christiansen.
I think one area where we really need to improve as a city is kind of where we need to also improve as individuals, and that's as a neighbor. One of the things I think the city could definitely do better is communicating with other entities. I think part of the problem we have with the whole Justice Center issue is, is just communication not necessarily flowing well back and forth between the city and the county. I think there's been issues that have come up in the past that have affected the city and neighboring municipalities, villages, and towns, and, and we maybe haven't handled those as well as we should. Sometimes we think, because we're the 900-pound gorilla, we don't really need to involve them and get their input, even though they're, I understand they're not directly paying taxes to us. Part of being a good neighbor is also listening and making sure that what we're doing also works well for, for other entities, even within the city. I've taken a lot of time working with, with the downtown, I do represent the entire downtown area, which would be impacted the most by the moving of the county facilities, and have, there's good things happening, we've created a business improvement district, a lot of good things are going in a good direction, but we need to make sure to, to have communication going to, to make sure those things keep happening.
Thank you. David Plezance.
Let's see, I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. Communication in my district is one of the big things that I really believe in. The people who are gonna vote for me are the people in the sixth district, they're the ones who I'm representing with my voice when I go to the meetings. I want to listen to them, I want to find out their problems and help them. There's the city issues, and then there's my neighborhood issues. And my neighborhood issues, in my opinion, are just as important as the issues that the city has. I have, I'm retired, I was a banker, right now I do her dash for a little bit of money, but I also do tax returns for cap services for low-income people for free, and I'm on the board for Habitat for Humanity. I feel that this position is also a giving position, and I've got the knowledge, I've got the time, and I've got the talent, that I hope that I'm re-elected for this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Niebohn.
Thank you. The city will be facing some very critical issues going forward. I believe experience matters when making the hard decisions and compromises that will be necessary to best serve our community. In addition to my education... In addition to my educational work history, my appointments to the Plan Commission, Board of Public Works, Transportation Committee, Alder Liaison to the Police and Fire Commission, Public Policy and General Government Committee, and the Redevelopment Authority have all been critically important in providing me with the tools needed to help move the city forward. My track record in District Seven is strong. I pride myself on being responsive to my constituents. District Seven residents reached out to me with specific concerns that resulted in the creation of an ongoing alley repair program, and eliminated the fee to park overnight in front of your own house. I listen to my constituents, I respond in a timely manner, and I use my experience of how local government works to represent their interests and solve their issues. I want to thank our sponsors again for this opportunity, for my opponent and myself and these other candidates, to highlight our differences and our visions for our districts and our city. To quote Thomas Jefferson, "A well-educated electorate is a prerequisite for democracy. Knowledge is power." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates for the time and energy they have invested in running to serve as a Stevens Point alder, and for participating in this forum. And feel free to stay and talk with constituents afterwards. On the April 4th ballot, Portage County voters will also be voting for several other offices, including the justice of the Wisconsin Supreme Court, the Wisconsin Court of Appeals, District Four, Wisconsin Circuit Court Branch One, the Stevens Point Area School District Board, the Plover Village Board, Ward Two trustee, Plover Village Board president, and Stevens Point mayor. Also on the ballot are three statewide ballot measures. One is to authorize the state legislature to define serious harm in relation to the conditions a judge imposes on an accused person released from, before conviction. A second authorizes judges to impose cash bail on an accused person of a violent crime based on circumstances, like the need to protect the community from serious harm and the probability the accused will not appear in court. And then the third initiative is, advises the state legislature to require able-bodied childless adults to look for work in order to receive taxpayer-funded welfare benefits. Stevens Point voters will see two road referendums on the ballot totaling $4.2 million for routine maintenance projects. The League Women Voters of Wisconsin has a candidate guide for the Wisconsin Supreme Court election, which may be found at vote411.org. Myvote.wi.gov also provides information about the April 4 elections and the voting process. This concludes the forum for the Stevens Point alder candidates. Thank you, candidates, thank you, audience, for your participation and attention. We also wish to thank Seth Hendricks and John Quirk of the City of Stevens Point, who taped the forum and replayed the forums on the city site on stevenspoint.com/youtube. Along with tonight's forums, the Stevens Point Area School District Board Candidate Forum, the Village of Plover President Candidate Forum, and the Village of Plover Ward Two Candidate Forum are also on the Stevens Point YouTube site. These broadcasts are an appreciated service to area citizens. Thank you to the League members, the UWSP Student Government Association, and the members of the Portage County Business Council, who volunteered in various ways this evening to make the forum possible. We couldn't do it without all of them. I also want to thank the staff of the UWSP Dreyfus University Center for their assistance and for the use of this theater. The League believes that when you vote, you are participating in one of the most basic and important responsibilities you have as a citizen. When you vote, you are empowering your political voice. Please remember to vote on April 4th, your vote does count. Now let us show our appreciation to the candidates, and have a good evening.